... city council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg.
We have a scout from Troop 88 with us. I'd like to invite him up to lead the pledge for us.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have an honor tonight to swear in a new police officer. Chief, invite you up and make an introduction and then we'll do the swearing in.
Tonight we'll be swearing in one of our newest officers, Travis Roseboom. Travis was born in Vermillion, South Dakota, in 1985. That was also the year I graduated high school. I remember it well. And he and his family later moved to Omaha, Nebraska, where he graduated from Millard West High School in 2003. In December of 2007, he graduated with his Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, Public Affairs, and Community Service from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. In February of 2008, he was hired as a police officer for the Blair, Nebraska Police Department. And then he attended the academy where he graduated from Class 171 later that year. And before he came to us, he was a detective at the Blair Police Department. I will say that during my interviews with the then candidate, Roseboom, that he had the best answers for every one of my questions. He demonstrated a thorough knowledge of this city. I think he even rivaled the knowledge of Chris Woodin, Deputy Chief Chris Woodin, that has lived here all of his life. And Travis was able to demonstrate to us that he knew what community policing was, what it meant to serve the community, and that he bought into that 100 percent. I think he's an excellent candidate for our police department. He fits the culture of not only the police department, but this city as well. And so as a lateral police officer, he's already entered into the field training program, and he will be hitting the streets probably within a short period of time because of all of his experience. And so Travis, would you introduce your family?
My parents are here, Paul and Shelley Roseboom. Next to my mom is Tyler Roseboom, which is my brother. Matthew Roseboom, my brother. Behind him is Caitlin Roseboom, my youngest sister. My brother-in-law, Brett Wyhee, his wife, my sister, Kim Wyhee, and then my wife, Sabrina.
All right. Mayor Black?
I state the name.
I, Travis Roseboom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of a civilian police officer.
Of a civilian police officer.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of.
Or am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overgrowth government.
That advocates the overgrowth government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overgrowth.
That advocates the overgrowth.
Of the government of the United States.
The government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So that we can have.
So that we can have.
Congratulations.
Ms. Myers, administrative report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Well, Mayor Black and I have been quite busy with United Cities members reviewing proposed bills and determining city impact. The legislature introduced over 700 bills, so we're trying to make a determination of which of those impact us. Also, Councilmember Tom Mumgarth and Carla Rupiper recently testified, I guess it was just yesterday, in opposition to the proposed small sale bill, which is proposed to eliminate the majority of local control over placement, size, and cost. So we'll have to wait to see the outcome of that testimony. The United Cities has sent a letter in opposition of LB 103 and LB 158, both which would change the provisions related to property tax requests and assessed value of real property. Bottom line, it would significantly impact our ability to grow and does not account for new construction valuation, growth, or annexation. I did provide you a copy of that, and we'll continue to provide you copies of those letters that we send in opposition of any proposed bills. If there's any bill that you have an interest in, or any questions, or would like a briefing, please let me know and we can sit down and have a conversation relative to those. Now with just a couple items about pending meetings and training opportunities. I think you got a notice from Kendra about an elected and appointed officials' training on Thursday, February 20 at 6:00 PM at the Embassy Suites in La Vista. Mike Konduff will be presenting. Some of you may remember, we had Mike present to us at a council retreat a number of years ago, a good presenter, and I think it would be value if you could attend. MAPPA, Sarpy County, and the cities of Papillion and La Vista are cosponsoring the event. So I encourage you to attend. Please let Kendra know, know later than Friday. Also, the Sarpy Chamber Commerce Grand Giveaway is just a short while away. It's Tuesday, March 12 at the Scott Conference Center. Again, we'll be sending out a notice if you would like to attend. And lastly, the Papillion Landing Community Center Tour is scheduled for next Tuesday, February 12 at 4:30 PM. Hopefully, we'll see all of you there. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1817. An ordinance to amend Chapter 205 of the Papillion Municipal Code to remove all references to floor area ratio, FAR. The applicant is the City of Papillion. This is a public hearing, and I'll open it. Is there any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1828. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Residential and MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of 120th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashberry Hills Development LLC. Public hearing, I'll open it. Proponents?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight from the applicant is Mr. Peter Cat and also Mr. Steve Shampoo of the Ashberry Hills Development LLC, also part of Legacy Homes. With me also tonight is Kyle Bull and Jason Thielen of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular development. What I probably would like to do with your permission, Mayor, is that we've got the change of zone on this particular agenda item, but then we have an amendment to the comprehensive plan and preliminary plat that follow this, but they're so intertwined that I probably will end up presenting a little of both at this time with the change of zone.
Go ahead, present, and then we'll carry those comments over to the other items as well.
Thank you.
For the record.
So if we can pull this... Oh. I don't want it to block my face. I'm kidding. All right. What you have up here is the site plan that shows the entire development. And if you're not familiar with this particular area, I don't know if the arrow works. Yeah, there we go. There we go. Well, in any event, north of here is Ashberry Farm, the single-family subdivision that extends all the way to Highway 370. To the south and the west, it's currently undeveloped, as is this particular property. And then to the north and the west is Founder's Ridge, which is a newer development. And then, of course, just to the east and north is Ashberry Creek. So this is bound by 120th Street. There, there's the arrow. 120th Street here, Shram Road on the south, and 126th Street on the west. And then, of course, you have Ashberry Farm subdivision immediately to the north. What is being proposed here are 247 single-family residential lots. There are really three different housing sizes within this particular development. We wanted to put the larger lots on the north side to be compatible and comparable with the Ashberry Farm subdivision. So you'll note that there's 47 lots in the blue area. Those lots have an average width of 105 feet and an average depth of 150 feet, so they're very comparable in size to the Ashberry Farm subdivision. The lots in that area are anticipated to have a value on the homes that are constructive of $550,000 each, so they'll be larger homes. In the area just south of Gold Coast Road, and this is proposed Gold Coast Road that makes the east-west connection between the property of the east and the property of the west when it's developed, you see these lots in red. There are 59 of those particular lots, and these are similar to the Wingate Ranch subdivision in the City of Omaha, so they have a depth of 90, I'm sorry, width of 90 feet and a depth of about 130 feet. And again, there's 59 of those lots, and they will have an average price of approximately $400,000. And then you get into this area here. This is 141 lots that are shown in this area, which is kind of a gray or green look. These lots are very similar to Prairie Hills, which is also a legacy development, and these lots have an average width of 70 feet and a depth of 125 feet. The houses will average in price here of about $310,000 for those particular lots. And then what is also shown in this location here are some duplexes and villa lots, and there are 39 of those lots in this area. And the approximate value of those houses in that area will be about $200,000 apiece. And then we have two, what we're kind of referring to as the missing middle development. One is this particular lot here, which is Outlet K, and then this lot up here, which is Lot 290. These lots will be zoned as part of the mixed-use portion of this development. And so the rezoning that's before you today shows all of these lots are to be rezoned R4. And then really this area over here is MU, and this area here is also MU. This particular lot here is Lot 287. This is the proposed Papillion Public School, elementary school that's going to be developed. That's about a 10-acre site. Then we have Lot 288 and 289 in this location, and those show recreational use along this edge of 126th Street, and then a self-storage facility in this location in the southwest corner of the proposed development. There are also nine outlots. The outlots are for the purposes of post-construction stormwater management, a green space, open space. They're spread throughout the particular development. The one outlot in particular is Outlot H in this location, which will be dedicated as a public park or an extension of the park that's immediately to the north. That's about an acre of property there. With respect to the master plan, since we'll kind of get into that because it talks about density, and I think where we have the site plan up, it's probably appropriate to talk about that. I think your comp plan calls for this to be a low-density residential area. Low density, and your comp plan is defined as 1 to 4 units per acre. Based upon 155 acres in total, we could have up to 621 units throughout this particular development on 155 acres. We have 247 single-family lots, 37 duplex lots that we talked about, and then on Outlet K and Outlet 290 as part of the mixed-use area, there's approximately 116 units there. So what we're showing here, again, we could have 621 units. What we're showing here is 400 units. So we actually could have 221 more units in this development than we currently show this development. And so we have a total overall density of 2.5 units per acre. So it's very low-density residential housing for this 155-acre development. As far as traffic and access, again, we have 120th Street being extended from Ashberry Farm to Shram Road. We have 126th Street being constructed in the future. And then we have Shram Road, of course, being improved along the southern boundary of the proposed development. This is a phased development. The Phase 1 really includes most of the single-family residential lots and the school and some of the duplex lots in this location. I do have a phasing plan, if you'd like to see it, that I colored it myself, but I'd have to show it on this, so I'll just keep it here unless you have specific questions about the phasing plan. And then there is kind of a middle area here, which is Phase 2. And then Phase 3 is the missing middle, if you will. And again, that particular mixed-use development plan will come with the final plat. We have made a submission for that, so you'll see more details when we come before you with the final plat for this entire development and based upon the different phases that we're doing here. So we believe that we've met all the requirements of the recommendation report, and I understand Mr. Sturzmann had sent out a memo that essentially acknowledged that, and we appreciate that. We're ready to move this forward. We've met with the Ashberry Farm neighborhood quite a few times, and Mr. Cat has met with them individually a number of times, and I think we're in a good spot with them. I think they're all generally in support of this particular development, and the school district, of course, really brings a nice enhancement to this particular development. The Papillion Public School District intends to construct this school really as soon as possible with an opening for the fall of 2020, as far as having students attending that particular school. So with that, just a couple things on the recommendation report. I think there was a couple comments about having to amend the wastewater service agreement with the City of Omaha. I've talked with Bob Stube, being the Public Works Director of the City of Omaha, and of course, on this council. And we have to get into the details of that, but Mr. Stube, I think, thinks that he can approve something like that administratively at the City of Omaha level. And I guess my question was, with the approval of this final plat, when it comes down the road, that's really tacit approval of the connection because we provide for the entire sanitary sewer plan with this particular development. If we need to do more, I don't think we do, at least that would be my opinion, but that's something we can talk about down the road. There are a couple things that I just have to mention, although I'm not going to quibble about it, we want to move this forward, is that there's a couple due process issues maybe in the recommendation report, but again, we're not going to worry about that right at this point. And we really just want to move this forward, get the final plat to the planning commission as soon as possible, and then, of course, to this city council as soon as possible so the school can come under construction. So with that, we appreciate all the work of the staff and the planning commission's recommendation, and of course, we're here to answer any questions by this council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Oh, Mr. Mumgarth.
Could you give a little more information about 126th Street? It comes out of Founder's Ridge. Now, I know there was early on during the discussions with the neighbors, discussions about when the streets of your development would be connected to 126th Street. What's the final decision on that?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe 126th Street will be constructed to Gold Coast Road, so Gold Coast Road will make that complete east-west connection. And then, of course, it meets up with 120th Street that runs north and south here at this location. And my understanding is the development immediately to the east is under construction now, so that that will, that Gold Coast Road will have a through street. So there'll be multiple ways in and out of this particular development.
Well, okay, specifically?
Yes.
Specifically, will Gold Coast be connected to 126th Street all the way up through Founder's Ridge during Phase 1?
Yes. Yeah.
So people will be able to leave from the west and then go north up through Founder's Ridge?
Right. See, this street right here will be part of Phase 1. So this phasing plan, all of this is Phase 1. So there's a huge area within the initial phase, and Phase 1 actually even comes down into here and hits a few of these lots, and then also the storage facility. So Gold Coast Road is part of Phase 1. 120th is all part of Phase 1. And this connection up to 126th Street and through Founder's Ridge to Highway 370 is all part of Phase 1.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I guess I was just wondering if you want me to ask my questions relative to the wastewater now or wait until we get to the preliminary plat?
Let's go ahead and wait for the preliminary.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody want to speak against? Anybody neutral? Close the public hearing. Next two items are related to the same one. So item E2, Ordinance 1828. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Resi... oop, I'm sorry, that's the one we just did. Item F1, Resolution R190005. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of 120th and Shram Road. Applicant's Ashberry Hills Development LLC. I'll open the public hearing. I call for proponents. We will carry the other comments forward. So anything new?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant, with the applicant and with the consulting engineers here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190005?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Mumgarth. Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so I'm going to try to bore you here a little bit with wastewater and talk a little bit about this development and how Omaha and Papillion have had an agreement relative to wastewater, I think dating back to 1975. This particular development is somewhat unique from the perspective is that there's two outfalls that this development falls into, plus there's a ridge line that falls on the very southwest corner of this particular development. We, within the City of Omaha, have looked at this particular Phase 1 portion where the soccer fields are and where the storage units are. And in that particular location, from what I understand, is that it will be graded to allow for the wastewater coming from, I think, the caretaker's building or whatever, to flow to the north.
Because it's that specific parcel that's on the other side of the ridge line, right?
That is the parcel that's on the Platte River watershed. So we've got two different watersheds here. The one that Omaha has jurisdiction over is the Papillion watershed. And so because of the fact that the water from that southern part of that area, the wastewater will flow to the north, and it's a very minor amount of wastewater that's going to be generated in that particular location in comparison to the whole area, we don't believe that there's necessarily an impact. And so as Mr. Jovan indicated, I looked at the wastewater agreement today, and there's really two ways to amend it. One would be by council action by both communities. The other way would be for administratively, the Public Works Director within Omaha to make that modification or amendment to the agreement, and it would require city council action in Papillion. So because of the fact that this is a very, very minor modification to the wastewater agreement, I don't see any reason why that the Public Works Director within Omaha wouldn't approve allowing that to happen, so.
If he gives us an issue, we know who to lobby.
There you go.
So, thank you very much. Any other council discussion?
I do have some other comments.
Go ahead.
Relative to the storage facilities. And I know this is something, I think in the information we had, it was part of Phase 3, and I see based on the latest map that was put up there that it was moved into Phase 1. And I guess one of my questions would be relative to the kind of the conditions of the storage facilities, setbacks, what are the parking lots going to be used for? I noticed that there's a little bit different from the standpoint of access to the parking lots in that particular rendering that was put up there versus what we're seeing. And so I'm kind of looking at how you plan on accessing for parking for the soccer fields, parking for the storage facilities, and then what are the storage facility parking lot going to be used for? And will those conditions of the storage facility be part of a mixed-use agreement or a subdivision agreement?
Yes. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100. Happy to answer that. We submitted a mixed-use development agreement with the final plat specifically for this entire area. As you know, City of Papillion has an ordinance, doesn't allow anybody to store any kind of boats or RVs or any kind of vehicle outside of their home, and you guys actually enforce it, which most communities don't. And so it has created quite a need in your community for a facility like this, on top of the fact that the ridge line that Mr. Stube's talking about flows right through here. So there's a fairly significant portion of this project that won't serve for quite some time, be served by sanitary sewer. In terms of just the project itself, you've got four arterial streets that run through this project. You can't front any lots to it, so tremendous amount of cost to this development, and obviously there needs to be some benefit to the development. So it does two things. One, it provides a need in the community that we know exists, and so those parking lots will be used for RVs, boats, vehicles that people can't store at their location. We know for a fact, for example, that people drive in as far as Bennington and even further west to find places to put their vehicles in Papillion. So there's that. The mixed-use development agreement, that'll all be hard-surface, it'll all be concrete, so it's not gravel. We've got a landscape plan as well as a fencing plan that we've submitted with that mixed-use development agreement. So you'll have fencing all the way around, which will be a press point, almost wrought iron fence, with landscape screening in front of it to screen all of this from the road. This particular piece of property sits about 15 feet below these houses here, because there's quite a bit of drop. And then when this mixed-use development agreement comes before you, we've got architectural standards, material pallets, everything that's required for that. This will look residential in nature. And the particular user that has agreed to do this project in this first phase is one of the, probably one of the best operators and builders of storage facilities in the Omaha area. So, you know, high-quality development. I know people think storage. I think you can tell the way we place the buildings, just the various edges of the buildings are facing the public street, so a minimum amount of building, and those buildings will be all stone, brick, as well as having the pitched roof to it, so it'll look residential in nature. Any bet?
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Also related, item F2, Resolution R190007. Public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of 120th Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Ashberry Hills Development. I'll open the public hearing. We'll carry the comments over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant, again, as I indicated. Again, as I indicated before, this proposed development is consistent with your comprehensive development plans. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R190007? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Motion passes. Item F3, Ordinance 1827, "An ordinance to approve an amendment to the 2018-2019 fiscal budget." Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1827? Motion by Councilman Mungard, second by Councilman Sunday. Any council discussion? Motion passes. Next is Item F4, "A resolution to approve applications for the 2019 summer fireworks season, June 25th to July 4th." If there's no opposition, I'm going to handle all 10 in one motion, unless a council member wants to pull one off. Item License 1, Bellino Fireworks, Don Bellino, it's a for-profit business, 22 years consecutively. Standard fireworks, Michaela Ripple, for-profit, 22 years consecutive. St. Columba Hill Shepherds, Arlen Hunter, nonprofit, 22 years consecutive. Sarpy County Swim Club, Brian Brasshaw, nonprofit, 19 years consecutive. Echo Softball, Sarah Sortino, nonprofit, 19 years consecutive. Tangier Shrine Center, Gary Unger, nonprofit, 17 years consecutive. Papillion La Vista Optimist Club, Fred Huey, nonprofit, 16 years consecutive. Papillion Spirit Football, Leah Joakimson, nonprofit, 13 years consecutive. American Legion Post 32, Dave Dolan, nonprofit, 13 years consecutive. And Wellspring Church, Joe Chase, nonprofit, 2 years consecutive. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190015 for all 10 licenses? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents besides all the applicants that are here? Any opponents? Seeing none? Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Item F5, Resolution R190019, "A resolution to approve a license agreement with Harry Bossert, American Legion Post 32, 230 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, regarding the Legion's proposed temporary unlimited use of an adjacent small parcel of city park property." Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190019? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Motion passes. Next is Item F6, "Resolution R190016, A Public Hearing and a Vote. A resolution to approve a Class C K liquor license for Pipeline for Success LLC, doing business as Pato Loco Mexican Restaurant, 120 Olson Drive, Suite 101, Papillion, Nebraska, and a manager application for Shannon Y. Slobodnik." So, it's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I know the applicant is here. I'll invite you up to maybe share a little bit about what you're doing. Use it as a little bit of a commercial, because it is going through a change.
Yeah. Well, thank you, everybody, for allowing me to come before you. About just a little bit of my background.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, Shannon Slobodnik. And I live in Papillion since 2007. A little bit about my background, I worked at Firstata for 31 years and retired from there in January of 2017. I bought a sports bar in Gretna in January of 2017, the month I retired. I don't know why I did that, but I did. And I've had that for two years. I still own that, Thirsty's Pub is what it's called, from 2017 to 2018. I grew it by 22% in revenue. And then, this last January over last January, the previous January, it's grown 31% this last month. So, I'm pretty much, you know, focused on clients and the voice of the clients, and I plan to do that with Pato Loco. I don't know if you guys have seen, there's a lot of been, quite a bit of bad press as far as reviews. I've currently addressed every single review that's been on Yelp, on Google, on Facebook, all of the reviews about the establishment. And, you know, ask people, give me a little bit of chance, and then come back, free appetizer, whatever, and, you know, help me with the new, perhaps a better rating, so we can get the scores up. My focus has always been clients and listening to them, and that's what I plan to do here. I've already gone in and tried to fix what's been broke, totally changed the menu up, got the food where it's supposed to be. I'm actually managing there. I'm there, you know, pretty much every day, going around to the tables, finding out what's, everything's good, how's the food? I've gotten not one bad issue about the food since I've taken it over. Been addressing some of the service quality issues that we've had with some staffing changes. And so, basically, that's what I plan to do, is keep listening to the client, and I'm, you know, see all the growth in Papillion since I've lived here. And I'm very excited about helping to establish a Mexican restaurant in Papillion and help grow it.
I just want to clarify one thing, because we do televise this and people see it. So, you mentioned fixing things, service quality, and negative reviews. That was under different ownership.
That's right.
Just want to make sure people understand that, that actually Shannon's the new owner of it. So, she is addressing those issues of the, kind of, the reputation it had before. So, absolutely new ownership under Shannon.
Yes, yeah. On January 7th, I purchased it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R190016?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Motion passes. Be sure to go to the chamber's ribbon cutting, and that's scheduled for when?
February 12th, 4 o'clock.
February 12th, 4 o'clock. Thanks, Shannon. Item F7, Ordinance 1830, "An ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 multifamily residential to R4 PUD 2 multifamily residential. Specific planned unit development for the property legally described as Lot 123 Lincoln Way, generally located on the northwest corner of South 96th Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is SB Communities LLC." Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1830? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F8, Resolution R190020, "A resolution to approve the planned unit development PUD agreement for the Sterling Lot 123 Lincoln Way." Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190020? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Mungard. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. I don't think any committees met the last couple of weeks. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none? Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Mungard, myself, the chamber hosted a legislative coffee, and we're at that. There's another one on the calendar coming up. So, if you want to attend those and stay up what's going on with our specific state senators, let Kendra know, and she can know when that's scheduled. It's coming up in the next week or so. I can't remember the exact date. Number of us, Mr. Ingberg, myself, Ms. Ruth Piper, several others, attended a City 150 meeting tonight, Papillion 150. Just for council and anybody watching this, the planning is starting for Papillion's 150th birthday in 2020. So, there's already an executive committee formed, there's a steering committee formed, and there is a very large group of a steering committee that's formed that makes up a lot of people from the community, old families, not-for-profits, for-profit businesses, and just trying to plan what's a year-long birthday party look like. So, if anybody wants to get involved with that, probably the best contact would be Laura Swartz at the Community Foundation, and she can get you plugged in there. And then, Ms. Myers and I attended the United Cities Meeting. The bulk of the topic this time was going through all of the legislation, because all the legislation has been introduced. And so, we went, the other mayors and administrators went through all of those to see which ones do we want to watch, or there maybe we actively want to support or oppose. So, if you're interested in any of those positions, let us know, and we can go through that report with you. And also, if you have any specific bills that you want us to take action on or watch, let us know that, and we can get it onto the list. Mr. Mungard, Ms. Ruth Piper, again, thank you for going down this week to testify on 5G. Papillion's working very closely with the League of Municipalities, and we're probably one of the leaders in the state on that whole issue. So, if you have any questions on what we're doing there, let us know as well. Sarpy County Economic Development's got its annual meeting later this week, so if you want to go to that, let Kendra know. And then, again, a reminder, February 20th, Mike's, Mike Kendra's coming in. Great opportunity, if there's any way the electeds can go to that, you'll want to go to that. And then, just as a point of reference, Ms. Myers mentioned the legislature introduced 700 bills. That's, I'm going to guess, probably double what is, happens in a normal legislative session. So, there are a lot of bills going in, and I think a lot of them aren't well-thought-through, and a lot of them have impact at the local level. So, we're really actively watching. So, if you can keep your eyes on ones, just in case we miss something, that would be great, too. We do have a closed session tonight. I don't know if we have any students here, but I know we got a scout here, so just kind of let you know procedurally. Rarely can a city council go behind closed doors as a full council. Everything we have to do has to be out in the open, open discussion, open votes. But there's about three times we can go behind closed doors. If we've got a personnel issue, obviously, you don't want to talk about people out in the open, because it could damage reputations. We can go behind closed doors and talk about those. If we're doing any type of negotiation, and we're trying to figure out a negotiation strategy, again, we don't want to do that publicly, because then the other side knows what your strategy is. So, we can go behind closed doors. And there's one other, lawsuits, it falls into that negotiation thing, too. So, we can go behind closed doors and talk about those, come up with strategies, but we can take no votes behind closed doors. Actually, to take a vote, we have to come out in a public session and take that vote. So, that's all we can talk about out behind closed doors. And so, with that, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss labor negotiations and land negotiations?
Student, what's that?
What's that? Do we have some students with us? You've got to come up and introduce yourself, and the scouts do, too. You've got to come up to the podium and introduce yourself. And we'll wait, so you've got to start coming up.
Hi, I'm Jade Chapman. I'm from Papillion La Vista South. Mr. Ray Keller had us doing some applied learning things, and this was one of the options.
Thank you.
My name is Brayden Wees. I'm a troop 463. I'm here working on merit badge citizenship in the community.
Thank you.
My name is Emily McDowell, and I'm from Papillion La Vista South, and also Ray Keller had this applied learning project.
I'm Connor Henixon from troop 888. I'm here to finish my citizenship in the community merit badge.
Thank you very much. Now, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. The purpose of the closed session is only to discuss labor negotiations and land negotiations. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, city clerk, and city attorney.